Two in the morning. Time until the jumper goes, like, down by the outside. Thirty to college until eight, nine, five, thirty. That'll do it, so. The house, you know, certainly be doing this now. I'm. So, yeah. You gotta first a lot of hours and. Um, shower, you can't, but, you gotta work on this thirty minutes. Uh, carry down, maybe not carry that much. But, um, the entire, um, all, all day.
Oh, wow. Thank you for coming. Federal College.
I know.
Um.
I will, I saw on YouTube, but I have to have a live connection with that thing coming around. Okay, okay. You got a line? Play the CD. Hello, I'll be back. Go, go behind. Hmm? I didn't see, but I think somebody's gonna come and ask about we need to come walk out. And remember, I'm trying to get tired by this show. They probably won't be as smart as me. Yeah, here. Thank you for buying.
So, I can go out there and knock on.
I swear, if you hear like, "Thank you for that," I'm telling you, he doesn't care if I'm walking. I mean, he's putting me up there in the water. But I know he's not that bad in your. I mean, I don't even see his car, he just walked in the window, but that would be hard. It's definitely a car, isn't it? Put a big sign, CNN.
Oh, they're opening up there.
The work.
Free club out there.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm, 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 I'm. Through the yard. You guys, son, you have COVID-19 now.
Okay, maybe.
COVID-19, you're good. It's just a little bit of COVID-19.
Ooh, neat. Oh, you got the temperatures. Woo-hoo. That's okay. I'm glad you guys are doing it. So many places aren't. Sure.
Ninety-seven, ninety.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm surprised you're the first one here. Even Joel, he seemed like, like, twenty minutes.
No, I knew she'd be here by five.
I know, Joel should be here by ten, still, he's still not here.
Really?
Yeah.
Joe?
There, go.
Oh, no, I always beat Joe. Joel? I always beat him. Mm-hmm.
He always walks in the door first, but he goes in the highest.
Yes. Well, that's true. Yeah, well, he goes and he checks in with different people.
That's cool.
So.
You should.
I brought that in, yeah.
Where'd you find that? It's kinda cool. We can walk in, right away, as soon as you turn the corner, they have it, so. Yeah, we've got. The regular, um, bottles, we've got wine each, yeah.
I've ordered them, yes, yes.
I've got probably three or four more in the pocket.
Here you go.
I'm always changing them out.
Oh, that's a smart thing to do. So many people don't.
In fact, uh, because I change them out so quick, you see, I'm only wearing one, the one I usually use.
Absolutely. But as long as you're putting, um, hand sanitizer on, now, be aware, hand sanitizer, because the alcohol content in it can break down rubber gloves.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I usually do it, um, after contact with a person or any item.
Uh-huh.
I'll do it once, and then after the next one, I change the gloves out, plus my hand gets sweaty inside anyway, so I take off, let it breathe.
What do you mean? I wear them at work, uh, to deal with RTV, um, which is a sealant for engines. I've got robots that I deal with, so I know exactly how some of you make it.
Yeah. It's like I'm working on cars again.
Yeah, there you go. All right.
Are you saying how they? That's a good one, that's a good one. Yeah. You guys got one of your black T-shirts, have black.
Oh, please.
Um, yeah. Ah, but that should be worth it. You got two in your feet.
Six. Yeah. And these are natural exers. I like them because they've got really great perks.
Yeah, they look like they're nice and padded.
Yes, and they're so comfy.
I have some sweaty ones in here about, they seem better days, I have to start.
Yeah. Yeah. Brand new in my box. And because they were last season or whatever, I got them really cheap now. So.
They're hairy, too.
No, I don't. Now, for my kids, my grandson, oh my God, I will go way, way overboard. And whatever they need, they're getting, I don't care what it costs. We like it. Yeah, I always have our clearance.
I'm looking for pants. Trying to find. I'm trying to find a nice, comfortable pair of pants. And I keep ordering them, and I don't like them, and I send stuff back, and it's like.
Who are you ordering from?
Oh, I don't know. Kohl's, of course, and Pennies. But I wanna order from some of those things online, like, I wanna do, I think, instead of, we can't go to Macy's now, but I think I'm gonna order from.
Dill's has good sales.
Dill.
Nordstrom Rack has really good sales.
I just got on Nordstrom's, uh.
Yeah.
Website, just looking around. They have good sales?
I, oh, yeah. And I love, um, what is it? See, I'm a huge, I know you fish are bad.
I've seen it.
You know, whose stuff can be pricey? I get it all. Hi.
Hello.
Tell Rihanna, I've got more pens than her.
We had, we had eighteen people watching the test this morning.
Yeah. I gotta go. You.
Ooh, that's nice.
I know.
That's why I, uh. For our next meeting, I'm not being, I'm telling.
No.
With a minimum.
I'm ready to go, anything you guys are ready to do?
Just till things calm down.
I agree. No. Because I'm the only person that seems to answer their phone on a regular basis.
Are you done?
Yes, I am. But I'm only going to go to the deputy court, and the deputy court, too. Everybody else can play for themselves.
They will be good.
Huh?
They will be good. Uh-uh. Your boss does.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? He is here. Oh, my goodness, congratulations. They are so good.
Congratulations.
I'll give you a question. Yeah. I, I'm just, so.
Special.
Terry, I have, you, I don't have a seat for you. We're gonna be six in sixty, I didn't think you were coming, you told me you were coming.
No, I just wanted to be here.
I'm gonna have to put you on the end over there by me, I guess, if that's okay. Cause I, I have this.
Yeah, I have a tape.
Karen and the pad, I knew they weren't coming, but I didn't think you were, should have called, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
We're just relocating you.
You think I need to go?
I called the mayor and I said Rick has to sit down.
Yeah, seriously.
Couple meetings, we'll be back tomorrow.
So, I was trying to read yet, so are we going to just one meeting a month?
Yes.
Right now, do you further notice?
Um, effective June first, I put in the resolution, and we'll be back tomorrow. So it's, yeah, so April nine. So it's, yeah, for April 9th. And we'll be wanting the 3rd Monday.
Litigate, so in case people couldn't talk to get their stuff in. It's maybe, you know, the, the risk to everybody, so everybody's more comfortable. So I think we, I think we'll be good.
That'll be fun. We'll just do the minimum. We're reading their, all our applications, reducing all our exposure.
I was reading some of your followers.
What's going on?
Not too much, man. How you holding up?
Oh, okay.
Yeah?
Kinda suck this, but wants to make it like good a watch it, but, uh, I'm, we're live streaming now.
Oh, nice.
But, uh, just the audio is just this, because I, we have a turn in lights.
Oh, okay. Really?
Yeah, the internet is turned before. How the setup is blocking it from streaming the YouTube.
Uh... Good.
So how you been?
Good, you know, been busy trying to scramble and get some things set up. Doing, uh... Giving out lunches tomorrow at Church of the Regime.
Oh, that's awesome.
The Avon, even kind of put together like 350, like, bag lunches and 150, like, bags of, like, groceries. So, hopefully getting those out and delivering to a few people. We'll see, just kinda taking it day at a time. Trying not to go too crazy. Yeah. Yeah, I've kinda been doing it. Um, I like, I stocked up pretty good last week, and I've been not really going out, so...
Materials for projects.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I got, I got a couple books to, to get through, and hopefully that'll get me through the majority of it, and we'll see. Yeah. Yeah, you too.
How you doing?
Very good. How's things been here?
Today's been kinda slow. That was a good thing.
I do?
Usually crazy. I had to relocate, so...
Okay.
We're gonna sit in Dusty.
Okay.
And, uh, try and keep six home, it's a handicap. So, um, I'm trying to do both, voice votes all night except for the championship resolution.
I have to wait, then I'll call you.
Yay or anything?
Can't talk right here, right now.
Y'all gotta do the cheap seats?
Oh, no, you're over here.
Oh, I didn't have to give up my spot?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, my word, counselor.
That's the disaster itself, yeah.
That's uh... That's uh, does the, uh, city, the website? You pick out your... It could've been active, it just created one. But if, if he sent you the TV Tony link, it disappears on the front page.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah. Well, I, I mean, we'll just, we'll just send it to someone who maintains the website. But if you put, I can put the Lorraine pin up. This, this, like, all the truth took out. The link that you have, you do two clicks.
Geez, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do two clicks.
You're, you're okay.
Okay, thanks.
How long you think it takes me?
I can, I'm gonna pray an hour. There's no miscellaneous concerns for the chemicals.
How, how we doing?
Good, good to see you. Good job, bud.
How we doing?
Hey, Joel. All right, you're ready to speak.
I'm close to rock, but, oh, well.
For the next two hours.
Hey, how are you?
Well, so, yeah, retirees. Have the worst time.
Have the worst time. We, you know, we, we have a special... Um, we watch, we tie it home or...
You know, home on...
It's still new.
What's, what's my favorite color?
Oh, you're doing good. Oh, you're doing good. Still a shame.
I'm just saying, I'm very... Still the guy up here, Scott Paddock? He's in the Anheuser-Busch.
I'll tell you what's... A treasure to buy mortgage-backed securities. So, there's mortgage-backed securities out there. Other, uh, companies remain... If the Fed comes in, there's less for the, other folks who buy money. That's why, just like the mortgage. There's two people on my...
Yeah, sorry about that.
Prime, so then dropping the rates of prime is...
I do it very carefully. Yeah. I bet four, six tries.
You don't need to do different.
What are their rates?
How you doing, son? I'm running this time.
Um, yeah, I just, I start cleaning my house. I'll go around, she, uh...
Oh, she went back to the hospital, so... Huh? Oh, I'm fine. Oh, she's...
Yeah, there, there was a nut. Yeah, yeah.
I saw, I think she was looking over Mama's knee.
My spread is little.
She looked over at us.
This one, this one.
So, he's, he's pretty proud.
Is my name in front of this? Some of them were all spread out.
Born in?
You're, yeah, you sit in your spot because...
Oh!
All right, okay. Keeping busy, keeping busy, that's for sure, yeah, yeah.
New territory, creating a world, just like everybody else's. Figure it all out as you go. So far, so good, so far, so good, yeah. Yeah, we're trying to figure out, we got programs available for folks that can make their loan payment. We're gonna let them refer for a couple months. Yeah, we're making all those.
It's gonna be interesting to see the ripple effect, you know, everything we're gonna stir up, you know, by the end of the week, uh, what, what, you know, where it can be the far reaching.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, I don't know, I had, uh, a couple students, and I had, they said their parents were in Washington for two months. They're not back, it's worse, but, uh... And they weren't in the Wuhan, they were in the... But they were trying to, too much. Alcohol can be, it's kinda sort of weird to see. I like our government, I like what he's doing. Trying to create a state where we're safe. How are you tonight? Okay, good, good.
I did, I had to measure it out.
I brought in my, I brought in my team. Right now, it's on the air.
He's coming. Going to the rock door, though.
Wait, Carl. So we're gonna have... It was crazy, my friend was getting married, same day as he made up. I'm sure it'd be a very terrible... It's awful of marrying them, but I never decided.
They moved these.
I talked to him yesterday. So he's over deep, he's fucked down. He gets it. It's crazy.
So... She's still, like, some... What is it? What they say. I can still record his figure.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that's important.
Yeah, that's it, I appreciate you.
Anybody need any wipes? There's wipes right here. You're more than a size.
I wanted to like, flirt.
They just, they just shut.
How you doing, man? Good to see you.
Well, it's funny, once you go to town...
All right. Where?
What?
Plug. I'll plug.
Everybody's here, that's gonna be here. It's 6 o'clock. Yeah. He's been on. He's... Yes.
Will always be with us forever. Yes, that always Jesus said.
Amen.
Public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Paul, giving you your order. Roll call, please.
We have nine members present this evening. Absent are Mrs. Henley and Mr. Carrion.
Mr. Podolski. And, Mr. Alice.
Work motion.
Please vote.
Aye.
Close your hands.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. I just read this position of minutes, Mr. Podolski.
Motion to spend the 30 minutes.
Mr....
Support.
Orsberg.
Support.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. President, there is a correction that's required on the March 2nd minutes.
Okay.
A caption was read incorrectly. We need a motion to correct the record and ratify the minutes by inserting the following caption for ordinance 2020, which was passed on March 2nd. The correct caption should read, "An ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Lorraine City Planning Commission to approve the request for reclassification of parcels of property, commonly known as 4125 and 4415 Levitt Road, assigned permanent parcel number 0202007101061 and 0202007101-009 and more, fully identified by exhibit A and B attached here too." So we'll need a motion for correction and ratification.
Thank you. Mr. Podolski.
Yes, I make a motion to, um, provide the correction to correct the caption of ordinance 2020, which was passed on 3/2/2020.
Mr. Fallas.
Support motion.
All those.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item four, correspondence to the mayor.
We have reading in the special call letter, Mr. President.
Please.
Okay, dated March 17th. Honorable members, under the authority of ORC Section 73146, we, the undersigned members of Lorraine City Council, are hereby calling a special meeting of council in the Lorraine City Council Chamber for Monday, March 23rd, 2020, to begin no earlier than 6:00 PM. The special meeting is being called to consider all matters detailed on the attachment... I'm sorry, on the attachment labeled Exhibit A, which is today's agenda, which incorporates correspondence, legislative items, and other communications. Signed, Mrs. Springowski, Mr. Demakia, and Mr. Fallas.
Prudowski.
Yes, motion to receive and file, please.
Support.
Mr. Thorngsberg.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item five now, correspondence from the mayor.
Okay, the first item, we have correspondence from Mayor Bradley regarding the coronavirus and ways to prevent workplace exposure while continuing operations. And all members do have copies.
Thank you. Any comments, mayor?
I was on a conference call this morning with Lorraine Public Health, Dave Covell. He indicated that they'll be posting...
Mayor, I don't think your mic's on here.
They'll be posting a number of cases at 2:00 PM each day. That will be the number of cases as of 11:00 AM each day. If... He indicated that if you have light symptoms, such as a fever, a cough, shortness of breath, that you should stay home. He said that they've been getting about five or six cases per day at this point in Lorraine County. That he recommends that our police and firemen take extra precautions with any people that they come in contact with that have flu-like symptoms. He said we don't need to close our buildings, but we have to avoid close contact. And that's what we are attempting to do here at Lorraine City Hall, by having essential employees in the building. The courts have kind of restricted their dockets to avoid people having close contact. And as you can see, we've kind of marked off the council chambers for six-foot intervals. So they're saying that if people are in lines, they should maintain that six-foot interval between each other. He said that there's a 14-day incubation period, so that you should be quarantined if you... quarantined if you believe that you were... had contact with someone who has this particular virus. If you do get sick, you shouldn't return to work unless you've been home an additional three days after not having the symptoms any longer. There have been 21 cases in Lorraine County as of our conference call this morning. There may be more at this point. They're only giving the virus test to people who are showing symptoms. Those would be people in the high-risk categories and people that are headed for the hospital, except for our safety forces. If they're showing symptoms, they would be willing to test our safety forces. He said this is a marathon, not a sprint, so we need to be prepared for the long run. He said that if you have any questions about what's an essential business, you can contact the Lorraine County Health District, and they'll make a determination as to whether a business is an essential business or not for purposes of closing. And we put up signs at our playgrounds. We're allowed to go to the parks, but we're not going to have anyone using the playground equipment. That would be an area that would be suspect or that a child might contact a virus. So we're going to... I think Nancy Garcia is going to post signs at all our playgrounds saying that they're closed at this point. But we can go out, experience the fresh air, and take walks. Again, if you're going to take a walk with a neighbor or friend, try to maintain that six-foot distance. And of course, our city council meetings were exempt from having groups of, you know, larger than 10. But again, he recommended that the public not be at the meetings, which I think we're observing tonight, because this social distancing is very, very important. And that's why we set up the live streaming so that it could be broadcast to the public. And that would be the end of what we learned this morning at this... this phone conference with Dave Covell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd love to commend you and your administration on your leadership. Also, the steps that you took to quickly to combat this virus within your influence, your scheme of influence. Thank you to our safety forces, our city workers, who have continued to serve the city of Lorraine. And once again, as you said, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon, and working together, just like council has expressed. We will also be doing that, so thank you again. Item six, correspondence from directors, boards, and commissions.
Okay, item six A, we have correspondence from Safety Service Director Upton dated March 3rd. Advising the regulatory capital improvement compliance charge has been amended to reflect the rates in effect on February 1st, 2017. And all members do have copies.
There's no comments. Receive and file. Item B.
Next item is Auditor Shaver's correspondence dated March 18th, providing an overview of the negative financial impact the COVID-19 crisis will have on the city's budget, along with suggestions to approve only critical and necessary expenditures. And all members do have copies.
There are no comments. Receive and file.
Auditor Shaver has it.
Proceed.
I hope you have all had the opportunity to read my letter of March 18th regarding the impending fiscal impact of the coronavirus on the city of Lorraine. It's important for everyone to realize that the city cannot operate like the federal government that can simply just pile more dollars onto the deficit. As your chief fiscal officer, it is my responsibility to provide you with pertinent facts relating to our finances so that you all can make informed decisions. At a committee meeting back in June of 2017, I raised the flags about the large sewer rate increases that were being considered at that time. Today, we are discussing a reduction of those same fees. Many of our departments operate using standard operating procedures. We all need to understand that we are now in uncharted territories. Instead of just driving on cruise control, we need to press the brakes so we can steer our city through the upcoming curves and bumps. It is imperative that we all work together, start thinking outside the box, and prepare to weather this storm since we don't know how long it's going to last. This afternoon, Governor Dewine implemented a hiring freeze and ordered state agencies to cut back on their spending. If we prepare now, we may not have to take drastic actions later. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Auditor, and also you doing your due diligence advising us. I also saw that conference today where the governor has also recommended... Once again, it's up to the legislature, I believe, just like city council, that he's recommending a 20% reduction in the state budget. But that is, once again, that's just a recommendation. It's not anything in pass. But yes, we have to definitely be aware of all the items that you brought up. The one I'd like to also address is our raises coming up this year, the budget expenses there, so your foresight there. And just reminding people that, yes, you know, we're going to have to tighten our belts. I've always stressed in the past, like a lot of other council people, if we don't have the money, we're not going to spend it. So please bear with us. We hopefully will get through it, but as stewards of the city, council people here in the past have done it. If there's no money for a raise, if we have to cut personnel, we have to do it. Those are hard questions and hard answers, decisions we have to make. But thank you for making us all aware of that. I appreciate that. Madam Springowski.
Yes, I too watched the governor's speech on the television today at 2:00. And he did say the 20%. When I first came on to council in 2016, we were facing a deficit, and we had to cut things, and it was suggested 20% at that time. The one thing that we want to do... We do have contract talks coming up. I'm sure that the unions will work with us on this. They have in the past. And I expect them to do no different this time. But we do have to be very cognizant of this. And the one thing that I think that we really want to avoid is we want to avoid layoffs. And so we're going to have to adjust our budgets accordingly so that we... We do have the hiring freeze. I absolutely agree with Auditor Shaver on this. And that we look at all spending, all of the things that we had passed at the beginning of the year. We've got to go and go back to the drawing board and redo everything and get everything in line. And we're here. If we have to do special calls, if we have to patch people in that are immunocompromised and cannot be here for their own physical well-being, then we've got to figure out a way to get them involved. But everybody, it's all hands on deck right now. And if we have to start cutting salaries like we did with all of us donating back, then that's what we're going to do. We've done it before. We'll do it again.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Springowski. If there are no other... Mr. Demakia, excuse me.
I also agree. And again, this epidemic has changed things drastically for us as we've been trying to discuss and deal with our budget and see what that looks like. But the real question is, what does those cutbacks look like? I mean, the governor talked about 20%. What does it mean for the city of Lorraine? Are we talking 5%? Are we talking 10%? To piggyback on what Councilwoman Springowski was saying, does council need to start de-appropriating funds? You know, if you look at our 2019 budget versus our 2020 budget, we have additional positions and places in this... in this city that weren't here last year. So do we look at those types of things? And again, you know, what kind of number are we looking at? It's hard for us to have these conversations and talk about cuts and talk about de-appropriating. We really need to buckle down, look at the budget, and pull from the areas we can pull from. But what does that look like?
Thank you. Madam Auditor.
Through the chair to Councilman Demakia, just off the top of my head, in the general fund, if we were to cut 20%, that's $6.2 million. So that's huge. What I recommended in my letter is that we meet again in April to take a look at the withholdings that came in in March. Obviously, those are a month behind, so it's probably not going to really show anything until maybe April. Definitely, I know the interest that I calculated, the interest earnings is definitely going to go down. They have already cut the interest rates by 40% from last year, or from the beginning of the year, actually. So the interest revenue is definitely going to take a hit if things don't change. So I would recommend passing the budget this evening and then meeting back up in April to discuss options and take a look at what the revenues might go down to.
One last comment as well. And the other big topic we've been talking about is our utilities, these rate cuts. How is this now going to affect the city of Lorraine? I mean, any city after this epidemic, who knows what's going to happen? I mean, we could be potentially faced with looking at bankruptcy, you know, as a city. But now, how can we turn and say we don't need these funds coming into the city? And how do we cut those rates? And how do we look at those? I mean, again, I understand that our citizens have a hard time paying these rates. But how do we turn and say now that we don't need that money? You know, just another part of the conversation we really need to think about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Riley.
Through the chair to council and to the executive officers, I have already begun to think of contingency plans in the event that our revenues would drop. Have developed internally at this point in time at least a preliminary plan that would otherwise be applied to my department if, in fact, we face, as the auditor has indicated, a potential drop in our... in our revenues. And I did broach the issue with the administration earlier today. I would think that at some point in time, it would be appropriate for the executive officers to advance their contingency plans so that we might have something in place and not react too late or after the fact.
Thank you. Mr. Fallas.
Yeah, just some information on a global perspective. Some economists are predicting that the third quarter of this year, our GDP will be reduced by 30%. Now, that's just for a quarter. But just to give some context in terms of what they feel like things might happen in the economy. Is that going to happen? Don't know. But it's just... it's just some additional benchmarks to consider. And I'm in agreement with us really taking a real hard look at our budget fairly quickly after the end of the first quarter, see where we stand, and see what kind of adjustments we might or might need to make at that point. I think that would be the prudent financial management thing to do. So I'm in agreement with taking a real close look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thorngsberg.
You see... use your mic. Mr. Thorngsberg, there you go.
Fantastic.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair to the auditor, first and foremost, thank you for your letter as well as the template letter to send down to Columbus to start asking for some of these rainy day funds to be released. Through the chair to the administration, have we given directives to department heads to do exactly what Mr. Riley has just described that he's working on in his department? Are other department heads also looking at this? You know, where are we going to cut from? Or have we gotten to that point yet?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just talked with Mr. Riley today about that. So we're going to be talking about that with the managers, department heads at our next meeting on Monday.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. And then are we also doing any type of hiring freezes? I know this is around the time of the year where, like Lori and the parks, they do a lot of temporary hiring for the summertime. Are we implementing a hiring freeze?
I've been talking to Jobs Lorraine County, and they had originally told me that they were going to guarantee funds for 100 jobs that wouldn't cost the city anything. They're relooking at that, but I've been promised by Jobs and Family Services that they will provide some funds for us to do some hiring for the summer so that it won't have any effect on our budget. But certainly, if we don't get those funds, then we would be limited in the number of young people we could hire this summer. But it's still my intention to have that program go forward. And again, Jobs Lorraine County and Lorraine County Jobs and Family Services has indicated to me that they're going to get us some funds. It just may not be as much as we originally anticipated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I concur 100% with the auditor's approach here. I think we certainly need to revisit this next month and hopefully have some numbers in front of us, even if they're partial numbers as far as what this is going to look like as far as the hit goes. And I definitely don't think we need to be doing any hiring, any large capital expenses. Just need to kind of put everything on hold, get this budget passed tonight so we have something to turn in. But definitely come back next month and look.
I'd like to commend Law Director Riley for being pro... His contingency plan is best practices that can be replicated through other departments. We do that. If anybody is watching the commercial markets, like some of us are being forced to do since we're captive in our homes, and that's all my husband wants to watch, they will say that the commercial mortgage market is getting ready to collapse, and that will spur on a recession that is... that will rival the Great Depression. We have got to be prepared for our worst-case scenario. And that is... And when we're talking about fees and rates and understanding that, you know, what we're getting in from the water department, we have a fund there that is for projects down the road. But we are going to have to seriously look at the economic situation of our residents because if we can't afford it at City Hall, in most cases, given the socioeconomic dynamics of this city, chances are very great that the residents of the city are not going to be able to afford it. I'd like to see us cut the fees for like the readiness-to-serv charge. I'd like to see it brought in line with what was done by the mayor's office for the water fees, bringing it down to 2017 levels. And I'd like to see us not just make it till the end of the year, but look at this on a permanent basis. We have already pushed people to the very end of their tether in many cases. And until we get this rate restructuring done, we need to take a look at what we can do to alleviate this burden on our residents. It's time to put up or shut up. And we need to start doing this now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Springowski. Mr. Riley.
Through the chair to council, I did meet with our treasurer today regarding our tax code enforcement measures and with both judges and the clerk. And the purpose of those conversations were to... And the purpose of those conversations were to attempt to take steps that would ensure the continual flow of money into the city. It's one thing to cut back expenses, another thing not to be able to operate our basic systems that collect our monies. I'm pleased to report that Treasurer Soto and I and Mr. Kallo have worked out a process whereby our tax code enforcement cases will proceed. We have had, I think, a very positive result so far in that all the cases that have gone before court, only in one of those cases has there been a dispute, all other taxpayers have paid their taxes. And with regard to traffic code enforcement, citations and other such measures, we have put in place a process whereby those traffic cases will proceed to a conclusion, notwithstanding the court effectively closing to the public. So we are attempting to take steps that would continue to allow us to collect monies as best we can from our end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It was a very good conversation. Thank you for your comments. Hopefully, we adhere to them. So without further ado, please receive and file. Item number seven, correspondence from the general, from governmental agencies.
We have the Ohio Department of Liquor Control's notification of a C2, C2X, D6 stock transfer application for Shaq's Corner at 2009 West 21st Street, Lorraine.
Ms. Springowski.
Yeah, I haven't received any complaints about any problems from them personally. So if you would please notify the Department of Liquor Control that I have no objection to this, there's no problems there.
Ms. Carter.
I concur.
Please vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, correspondence from the general public.
We have none.
Item nine, committee reports.
Okay, on March 9th and 10th, Finance and Claims and All Counsel Committee met to review the 2019 year-ending financial data and discussed the 2020 budget and appropriating ordinance. Committee recommends referring the ordinance as amended to counsel for consideration. And on March 10th, the Finance and Claims and, I'm sorry, the Finance and All Counsel Committee also discussed a proposed ordinance amending ordinance 168-19, establishing the compensation benefits and benefits for employees in the law department. The committee recommends to refer the matter to counsel for consideration.
Mr. Fallas.
Motion to receive and file finance report.
Support. Ms. Springowski.
Support motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10, legislation first reading.
Introduced by Mr. Argenti, a resolution amending Resolution Number 1-20, the rules of counsel, Rule 1 and Rule 16, passed on January 6, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Argenti.
Move for suspension of the three reading rule.
Ms. Springowski.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Proceed.
Before you do that, I'm sorry.
Any discussion? Mr. Fallas.
Yeah, I just want to commend the Counsel and Councilwoman Argenti for putting this proposed adjustment together to, in response to the pandemic situation. I think it's very, very wise for us just to meet once, once a month. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Argenti. Ms. Springowski.
Support.
All those in favor signify by.
This time, I'll take a roll call on the passage of the resolution.
Very well.
Please answer by aye or nay. Mr. Demakia.
Aye.
Mr. Fallas.
Aye.
Ms. Springowski.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Argenti.
Aye.
Ms. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Shaver.
Aye.
And Mr. Thornsberry.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Thank you. Item B.
Next item is introduced by Mrs. Springowski, an ordinance appropriating a temporary easement of certain real property at 610 Broadway, Lorraine, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Springowski.
Motion to suspend the three reading rule, please.
Ms. Carter.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion? No discussion? Ms. Springowski.
I would now move for passage, please.
Ms. Carter.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Well, I believe we have to take a roll call vote.
We have to take a roll call on the pass.
Take a roll call, okay, I'm sorry. Proceed.
Okay, I'll call the rule. Mr. Thornsberry.
Aye.
Mr. Shaver.
Aye.
Ms. Moon.
Aye.
And Mr. Argenti.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Ms. Springowski.
Aye.
Fallas.
Aye.
And Demakia.
Aye.
Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Item C.
Introduced by Mr. Thornsberry, an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for the Lorraine Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Connectivity Project in the city of Lorraine.
Mr. Thornsberry.
I move for suspension of the rules.
Ms. Springowski.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion? Mr. Fallas.
Yeah, I'm just happy to see this before us and look forward to it being passed. These type of walkways and bikeways for bicycle folks in our city makes, make our city a little bit more attractive. So it's a good move for us, it's a good move for our community. Looking forward to passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, Mr. Thornsberry.
I now move for passage.
Ms. Springowski.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Demakia.
Aye.
Fallas.
Aye.
Springowski.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Argenti.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Thornsberry.
Aye.
And the ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Item 11, legislation second reading.
There's one more.
We've got one more.
10D.
Oh. Item D.
Introduced by Mr. Thornsberry, an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with Cold Water Consulting LLC for professional services related to the environmental and ecological restoration program management for the Lower Black River ALC Remediation and Restoration Program, Aquatic Habitat Restoration Project.
Mr. Thornsberry.
I move for suspension of the rules.
Ms. Springowski.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion? No discussion? Mr. Thornsberry.
I now move for passage.
Ms. Springowski.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Thornsberry.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Argenti.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Ms. Springowski.
Aye.
Fallas.
Aye.
Demakia.
Aye.
The ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Item 11, legislation second reading.
Okay, introduced by Mr. Fallas. An ordinance amending Section 15.3.6, Law Director of Ordinance Number 168-19, which establishes the compensation benefits and terms of employment for various classified and unclassified, non-bargaining employees of the city of Lorraine, excluding elected officials, managers, and professional employees, and the chief of police.
Mr. Fallas.
I'd like to send this back to the committee, Finance Committee, until we get a chance to take a look at the budget, to see what the implications of this would be based upon new budget numbers.
Motion to send the committee's always in order. Is there support? Mr. Shaver.
Support.
All those in favor will do a roll call.
Motion to refer to committee. Mr. Demakia.
Nay.
Mr. Fallas.
Aye.
Mrs. Springowski.
No.
Mr. McFarland.
Nay.
Mrs. Carter.
Nay.
Mr. Argenti.
Yes.
Ms. Moon.
Nay.
Mr. Shaver.
Yes.
And Mr. Thornsberry. And the motion is defeated. We only have three affirmative votes, voting yes are Mr. Fallas, Mr. Argenti, and Mr. Shaver. That motion is defeated.
Thank you. So once again, we'll go back to suspension of the rules.
Take a motion to suspend the rules.
Hold on. Mr. Demakia.
Yes.
And.
Mr. Thornsberry.
Mr. Thornsberry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion? Mr. Thornsberry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, guys, I know optics is bad on this with what's going on right now. However, I have full faith in Law Director Riley's understanding the economic realities that we're in right now, and the fact that they're already looking at how they can trim their budget down and things like that, make me feel really comfortable that we can pass this and that that department's going to be able to get in line with any cuts that we are going to need to make with this pandemic that's currently going on. So because of that, I support this wholeheartedly. It's been worked on for a long time in that department, and I don't think we can just close up shop and stop doing important things we were working on. And this is one of those things, I think, has been a problem for a long time, and I think we need to move forward with getting it corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Springowski.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Thornsberry on this. You know, they always say that two wrongs don't make a right, and we need this to provide part of the entire picture. And I have full confidence that Law Director Riley will make the appropriate and necessary cuts with regards to his department's budget, but I do feel that this needs to be inclusive of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Argenti.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we're going to follow, is this on?
Should be.
Doesn't look like it. No, it's a ring light on here.
Yeah, we're going to follow Auditor Shaver's recommendation, which I recommend following to the letter. And this is going against that. With all due respect to Mr. Riley's office, we've all seen the things that they can do and fishing, and they are actually quite phenomenal. But right now is not the time to cast this because it goes directly against everything that Auditor Shaver has recommended, and she's done her homework, and I recommend you follow her recommendations to the letter. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Argenti. Ms. Carter.
Yeah, I am sort of cotton, I feel like I'm, it's, I'm swaying both ways here, and I agree with the letter that Auditor Shaver put forward, and I want to change my vote to a no. It's not that I don't trust our attorney Riley. I believe that he's going to do what needs to be done, but this is a bad time. We had no idea that this was going to come and hit us like this, but I think we need to be very smart about our funds. So if that is in line, I'd like to change my vote because I want to make sure that we, or that I'm, you know, doing the right thing. It's not that they don't deserve it, they do, but we want to make sure that there, it's going to be an even field here.
Thank you. Ms. Springowski.
Yes, if we're going to play Monday morning quarterback, then we have to take it back to the beginning of the year, and I'd like to know approximately how many jobs were added on at the beginning of the year for the mayor's office down to janitorial? Because I believe that if we're going to do this, then we've got to go back, we've got to freeze on hiring, we need to take this back, and we need to take a good hard look at everything. And that, there's, it's like the hoarding and the mass chaos that's out in the stores right now, where everybody's running to go buy bread, milk, eggs, and toilet paper. And that, we have to do things smart, we have to make sure that we have the entire picture in front of us, and we have to go from there. Oh, jeez, oh, Pete. There go the fillings. We have to make sure that we are not doing this in pieces parts because, say, our worst fears aren't realized, and that we need to have the entire picture. So putting this together as we would have normally, then we sit down with Auditor Shaver, and we see where do we need to make the cuts? And if these are things that can be cut, then I'd rather see us do it with all of the information on the table than to do things artificially, because this is not going to go away. And so we need to take a good look at this. We all spoke in favor of these things, these things were very necessary, and if there are other ways that we need to make these cuts, then we are. Last time, I gave up 20% of my salary, I am very willing to do that again. Everybody's going to have to belly up to the bar, and if that's one of the cuts that needs to be done, that needs to be taken into consideration out of the Law Director's budget. But we've got to be cognizant of the people that we are dealing with on this, too. We, they, they've been doing these jobs of good faith, and they left here at our last council meeting with this coming to council in support of this recommendation. And I just don't think that we can go and let them down on this. We'll go in, we'll, we'll adjust things as we need to going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Thornsberry.
Nothing at this time, sir.
You raised your hand before. Okay. Mr. Demakia.
Through the Chair to Counsel, again, I agree that we are in a difficult situation here, and again, we have no idea. We, we have no idea what the budget's going to look like, what we're going to have to deappropriate, what we're going to have to cut, where it's going to have to be cut from, what, how many positions or people? We just have no idea because this is an unprecedented situation that America is in. And locally, it's, we've never dealt with this. But our job is to make difficult decisions, and sometimes we have to make difficult decisions that are the right thing to do. We sat in committee, we discussed this very ordinance and every document that was presented by Law Director Riley, and I sat here and listened to everybody give their feel-good story about, wow, this is, you know, this is the right thing to do, and these folks are very valuable. Again, we will have to reevaluate our budget and our situation down the road, and we'll have time to do that. But again, at this point in time, I think it's the right thing to do and support our employees, and I have complete confidence in Law Director Riley to make the appropriate cuts or do what he has to do to make his department right and whole as we look down the road at this situation. But again, I just think that kicking the can down the road, if we're going to decide that we're not going to make any decisions that have fiscal impact on the city, then we really don't have any reason to meet. We should just suspend all of our meetings because every decision on our agenda has a fiscal impact. So we need to consider that. I think, again, it's the right thing to do, and I'm in full support of this, and I think that we just move forward and we revisit this and look at the budget down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fallas, you're on.
Yes. Certainly appreciate and value the Law Department and each and every one that works in that department. However, we have 400-some employees, and we have a $30 million budget, and in order to make the right decision and the prudent financial management decision, we need to, we need to look at this in light of what our revenue is. I want to remind everyone, too, that when I was on council, we had a budget crisis, and people were asked to give up their salaries, and I think everybody on council absent of one did, but a lot of the other employees didn't do that. So that doesn't work. It doesn't work when you ask people to voluntarily give up their salaries because there's just not going to do that. So I'm concerned that we, we do this right, we do it at the right time, I don't think now is the right time, but it needs to be done. But we need to take a look at our city from a global perspective, determine whether we can or cannot afford this, and at the appropriate time when we can make that determination, I'll be the first one to vote and cast my vote yes for this, but now is not the right time. Thank you.
Thank you. There's been good conversations. Just reminder to council, this is the second reading, so you could always move it to third reading, that's your choice also. No further discussion? Excuse me? Mr. Demakia, you made the motion.
I move for passage.
Support. Mr. Thornsberry. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Schaber.
No.
Moon.
Moon.
Argenti.
Nay.
Carter.
Nay.
McFarland.
Nay.
Springowski.
Aye.
Fallas.
No.
Demakia.
Aye.
We have three affirmative votes. The ordinance is defeated.
Thank you.
Voting yes were Mr. Demakia, Mrs. Springowski, and Mr. Thornsberry. Item B.
Item B.
Okay, the next item is introduced by Mr. Fallas, an ordinance appropriating money for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Lorain, State of Ohio, beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Fallas.
We have a substitution, Mr. Fallas.
Yes, I'd like to motion to substitute information as provided by Clerk of Council.
Thank you. Support. Ms. Springowski.
Support motion.
Please vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so you have the corrected ordinance before you, provided by Auditor Schaber. I will need a suspension.
Okay, Mr. Fallas.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Ms. Springowski.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No discussion? Mr. Fallas.
Move for passage.
Ms. Springowski.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Passage of the ordinance. Mrs. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mrs. Springowski.
Aye.
Mr. Fallas.
Aye.
Mr. Demakia.
Aye.
Mr. Argenti.
Aye.
Mrs. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Schaber.
Aye.
And Mr. Thornsberry.
Aye.
And the ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Item 12, legislation third reading.
Okay, Mr. Thornsberry, you have a motion to make on that?
Yes.
Mr. Thornsberry.
I motion to ratify the action of extracting the item from committee and adding to this special call agenda at a third reading for consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Schaber.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion? Are you going to read it?